Supervisors to order. We will begin, as always, with the Bledge of Allegiance.
Bledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk will call the roll.
Supervisor Johnson.
Here.
Supervisor Pat Breslin. Supervisor Hedlund.
Here.
Supervisor Score. Supervisor Steen.
Here.
Supervisor Zahnz.
Present.
Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Willsey. Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Jerisimo. Supervisor Whitzel. Supervisor Kneer. Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Sean Breslin.
I don't think he's... Excused.
Excuse. Supervisor Vander Mullen. Supervisor Robinson.
Here.
Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Gilbert.
I haven't heard anything.
Okay. Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Here.
Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Lino.
Here.
Supervisor Hartung. Chair McCullough.
Here. You should like, you're getting that beep down. You could really go for the whole auctioneer thing. So, next up, approval of the minutes. I need a motion. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Zahnz seconds. Any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications. We're noting that Marcia, is it Fender or Finder? Fender. Retirement from District Attorney's Office with 38 years of service or $14,018 days. That is amazing. Thank you very much. I believe that's the only petition or memorial we have. All right. On to item six, public comment. I believe we had one person who wanted to come up for a public comment. That would be you, yes. Come on up here. And you'll need to identify yourself and give us your address. And you get three minutes.
My name is... I live at East 6681841st Avenue in Colfax, on Lake Teener. I am right across the street from Chaptney Park. The reason I am here tonight is we are, my neighborhood, is very concerned about all of the sediment and weeds that have grown in. I built a cabin on Lake Teener in 2003 with my late husband, Randy Gertz. And we put our boats in for many years in our boat landing in Chaptney Park. That boat landing is now totally grown in, and I have pictures for you to see if you'd like. Basically, what I'm wondering, is there any way we could have the area around Chaptney Park dredged? I am going to live in that cabin for the rest of my life, and right now, and for about five years, haven't been able to get a boat to my property. I own three lots on the lake, and I cannot have a boat. And my neighbors are in basically the same boat, and we're all very concerned. And it seems to be getting worse, not getting better. I've been there for 20 years, watched the sand come down and the weeds grow, and nobody seems to do anything about it. And I am now in this cabin for the rest of my life, and that's basically my story. And I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and hope there's something you can do.
Thank you, Pat.
You bet.
If you're interested, why don't you check in with our Facilities Committee? They manage our parks areas.
Okay.
So, go to the website, and Ann Vogel is the chair of that committee. And if you send her a message, they will be able to tell you more about our interaction with the lake.
Okay. Okay.
Oh. Supervisor Zahnz.
Okay.
And I will just, I'll volunteer that the Teener Lake Rehabilitation District meets tomorrow at 5:00. Okay. All righty.
All righty. Thanks, Jim. Okay. Add Supervisor Gilbert to the excuse list. Right. Anyone else for public comment? All right. On to appointments. I'm going to speak very briefly on that. I was distinctly not planning on talking about appointments, major appointments, again this month, but it's been a buff, very rough year for members of this board. As you all know, Don Keeter has gone into hospice and stepped down from the board. I will come back to that momentarily. It's also my unfortunate duty to let you know that Sheila Story, who was a member of this board for many years, recently lost her husband, Mike. We should like to attend the visitation on the 27th or the funeral on the 28th. Andrew will be sending out that information, so that that's possible. Returning out is Supervisor Keeter, who has, my most recent correspondence is still with us. Just like to ask you all to please keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers. He's served on this board for many years with dedication and great devotion, and he asked me to let you all know that he has been an honor to do so. As with Super Rogers before him, I would like to note how very much we will miss his dedication and wisdom in the coming months and years, and how much I miss him personally. That's all I have for the moment, though I expect I will need to return to the matter of Supervisor Keeter in the all-too-unfortunate future. Considering the circumstances of Supervisor Rogers, Supervisor Keeter, and former Supervisor Story, let me just borrow some words from an old television show. Let's all be careful out there. I don't want to do this again anytime soon. Okay. And with that, we'll move on to appointments. I want to separate out the appointment to fill Don's seat, because that is a much more consequential appointment than most of the others. So, if I could get a motion. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Steen seconds. Any speaking to the motion of appointing Barbara Lyon to fill out Don Keeter's seat? Supervisor Morehouse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence. I would like to take just a moment to speak in favor of Barbara Lyon's appointment to the county board. Don Keeter, as some of you know, had planned to retire and had been discussing with his neighbor, Barbara Lyon, the possibility of her running for his seat. They've been talking about the board and board responsibilities and what Barbara would step into. I'd also really like to say that this is a wonderfully well-qualified appointment to the board. As some of you may remember, we used to have a press table at the back of the county boardroom. My seat was just ahead of the press table. And Barbara Lyon, among other journalists, covered our proceedings and our work for, I believe, it's almost 20 years. Given that experience, she is, in my judgment, perhaps more qualified to serve on the county board than I, and certainly knows more about our work than many of us. She's an active and very well-respected member of the community, and I heartily endorse this appointment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Larry Bjork.
I would like to just pull my comments and tell the next appointments.
All right. Any further speaking to the appointment of Barb Lyon to fill out the end of Don Keeter's term? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Barb, come on up, and we'll get you sworn in. Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard. All right. Next up on the appointments requiring board approval, we have Dunn County Hockey Authority, Dunn County Fair Board, Menominee Library Board, and Library Planning Committee. Without objection, I would like to put those together. If someone wants to take them individually, let me know. All right. I would need a motion for those appointments. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Hedlund seconds. Any discussion of the appointments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The final three are the Vechon Services Commission, Facilities Committee, Neighbors of Dunn County, and those are all at the chair's discretion. Now, Supervisor Bjork, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, I do. And I think you know what it is. I spoke personally with you. I spoke personally with Facilities and other board members about my desire to be placed on the Facilities Committee. I have a lifelong working relationship with the Dunn County Fair. I have family that have been part of Youth Hockey Senate started. I've also been active, and apparently, they call me racetrack people. So, when I asked you to consider me for appointment to the Facilities Committee, I thought it had something to do with, I have interest in those committees and I have experiences. My experiences have been a degree in agriculture, works with extension, helpful on that committee. When I was put on the board, I was put on Health and Human Services, which, other than being a foster parent at what time, I didn't felt that I brought much to the board, but I sure enjoyed working with Chris for those years. And to be put on the Neighbors Committee, is it because I'm an old person? And you pointed out to me when we spoke that having two vacancies on one committee may be a problem, but I don't think it's a problem. I think you're looking at me and making a political decision on who you want where, and I don't feel that I've got an even shake. And if I don't say anything, or if I say something behind your back, I'm not that kind of person. I'm really disappointed that I was not appointed to Facilities Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bjork. Any further comment? All right. Hearing none. And I will get back to you, Supervisor Bjork. But I think that's probably a one-on-one discussion, not a whole board discussion. Report of the county manager, Chris.
Good evening. The answer to the question is, "I do, Dan." I'll get it, too. So, talk about multitasking. Make your messages go off, your emails are going off, people are talking. Oh, my gosh. Okay. Here we go. Collect my thoughts. Easy purchase orders over $40,000. Fairly standard, a lot of highway. Purchase of some new trucks, some hot nicks, and then our payment to our county auditor. Any questions about any of those? All right. Second point, Red Cedar Racing schedule. It's a bit of a moot point, unfortunately. Mother Nature was not cooperative. Our agreement with the Red Cedar Racing Association is that they will complete their race season by the end of September. This year, they were slated for their last and largest race on the, it actually was the fourth weekend of September, because there were five Saturdays in September. And that was a deluge of rain. And so, shortly before that was to begin, we were approached, I was approached, and Facilities was approached by the racing association to see if we would consider a one-time allowing them to go past the date of that into October for a reschedule, since they'd been rained out a number of days in the summer. And then they had also, we're going to lose out on this largest event, and a significant fundraiser for them, plus bring a ton of business to the community. So, we consulted with the chair of the Facilities Committee, Ann Vogel, consulted with Corporation Council, myself, Scott, conversations with Mark Thomas, and concluded that while there wasn't really a precedent for what we were deciding, there was also, it was also very low risk to give them approval to move into October for a reschedule. So, they were then slated to reschedule before October 22nd. They were scheduled for the 13th and 14th, and that was last weekend when it rained again. So, no reschedule, right? You're done? They're done for the year. So, it ended up being a bit of a moot point, but I did say that in part of granting that approval because it was unprecedented and because, you know, it was a low risk, but not 100% sure it was my decision to make, that I would report it to the executive committee and the county board as an action that was taken. Next, I'm going to invite to the podium a man by the name of Brian Della. Brian has worked with us in a capacity for a number of years as a financial advisor for an organization called PMA, but has approached us recently about our interest in doing business with PMA as our bond advisor. So, every time that we issue debt, we enlist the services of a bond advisor who walks us through the process and makes sure that we have all of our i's dotted and t's crossed. And one of the things that Brian showed us was that he had done for another, a number of other counties, was to take a significant look at their debt. And one of the questions that you had asked earlier, or had posed earlier, was if we borrowed, what was the impact on the, kind of the average taxpayer? And so, Brian's going to walk us through a presentation this evening that should be able to answer your questions. Brian?
And anybody can drive. It's pretty obvious, as I'm flipping through, or whoever's slipping through. Wrong password. Duh. All right. All right. Well, thank you again for the introduction. I'm Brian Della. I work for PMA Securities. Our firm does two different types of services. So, as Chris mentioned, I advise on bond issues, so debt issuance, you know, capital planning, that kind of stuff. And my colleagues at the firm work on investments, and we also do some investments with the county. So, that's just a little list of some of the services. But just so you understand, we do both debt issuance and investments. So, I had, you know, had talked with Biata and Chris about, you know, the county's capital needs and the need to consider borrowing, or what the impact of borrowing for capital would be. And, you know, the conversation started with, well, we need at least $3 million as a placeholder for some, for your analysis, and see what you can kind of do from there. So, that was, that was kind of the vague marching orders, but, you know, this is what I do for a living. I work on a lot of vague marching orders. So, that's where we started. And, you know, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, this chart here, this thing, you know, this is circular in nature, is that, you know, we look at, you have a variety of capital needs, right? With respect to dollars and timing. So, when we look at capital, there's a range of needs, and then that creates a range of debt issues, and a range of structures, and a range of debt service, and impacts to the taxpayers. So, sort of the idea is that, you know, we'll take, we'll take a look at an example, and we'll go from there, and, you know, and you can, we can run further scenarios in the future, but today's a scenario, and the idea is that over time, these things just are iterative. We put plans in place, and you guys, you adjust them as you see, as you see fit. So, I don't want anyone to think, you know, that this is anything that's set in stone. It was just sort of my first draft of what I thought was a pretty reasonable baseline scenario. So, this is the county's existing debt service. So, at the start of the year, you had a little over $32 million in outstanding principal that is due over the next 10 years. And for 2023, you had about $5,156,000. So, $5,156,000 of debt service that you levied last year for this year, 2023. And it's in this sort of dark blue here. So, on the next page, and that's hard to read, so I try to do everything, I try to do everything twice. Belts and suspenders, right? So, the first, the page we just looked at has actually all the numbers, so precisely the numbers, but that's, you know, that's not the easiest thing to follow. But here, on page five, we've got a bar chart, which, you know, should be easier to follow. And it just shows that you've got a little over $5 million of existing debt service from '23 through '26, and then you have this nice downward sloping or reducing amount of debt service. So, what, you know, what that indicates to me is good news, is because that shows that the county can borrow a certain amount on a regular basis without necessarily, depending on how much you want to borrow, not necessarily needing to impact the debt service levy. So, that's always kind of my baseline starting point. When you have this kind of scenario where you have a nice downward sloping debt service, you know, how much could we borrow without having to raise the debt service levy? And here. So, this table shows 10 years of annual borrowings. And we start off with $3 million, because that was, you know, roughly what I had talked to Biata about. And when I ran the numbers, I realized you could borrow, sort of over the course of the next 10 years, you could borrow, on average, about $4.1 million a year. So, what we have here is two years of $3 million borrowings, the next six years are $4 million borrowings, annually, $4 million annually, and then the last two years are $5.5 million annually. So, that, which, you know, in a way makes sense, because if, especially if you're doing, you know, just with the nature of inflation, right? I mean, $4 million in a couple of years might just be $5.5 million out near 10. So, it's, in a way, they're probably not terribly inconsistent in real dollar terms. So, anyway, I ran these numbers, and, you know, there's nothing magic about this, but, you know, the kind of the idea is it's about $4.1 million a year for the next 10 years. So, the next page shows the amortization of each of those debt issues. So, you know, it's hard to read, but you've got the paper copy, which would still be hard to read if you don't have your reading glasses on, which I don't have my reading glasses on, so I'm going by memory here. What you can see is the first one is, you know, the $3 million, and then the $3 million, and then the different $4 million. So, they have slightly customized amortizations, but that's necessary, and we'll see why that's necessary in a second. So, we just don't, what we don't do is we just don't say every bond issue or every note issue is just equal annual payments. We don't do that. We customize how the principal is repaid back, because we take your existing debt, and we, you know, we want to be thoughtful in how we structure the new debt. And that's just one of the beauties of municipal finance, is we can put principal wherever we want, and, because there's just buyers for different maturities. So, this is, you know, and this table here is the first, you know, the first existing debt was a kind of color-coded that, that dark blue, and this is just a little closer to a royal blue here. So, when you look at the next page, it's a chart, a bar chart. I took the, and it's probably not the easiest thing to see, but I took that dark blue, your existing debt, and here, you got the royal blue on top of it, and you can see, we can borrow that average of $4.1 million every year, and we can keep the county's debt service, aggregate debt service, precisely $5.3 million a year, assuming you can borrow at 4% over 10 years, which is a pretty reasonable assumption, you know, certainly based on historical norms. Right now, that's probably where you'd be. So, which is, which is, you know, above average, you know, so where we were five years ago or something. But anyway, you know, this assumes you're borrowing at $4 million, but you can see, it's just, you know, it's precise as it can be, $5.3 million a year in annual debt service. And then, you know, as you can see, that target line slopes down at a, you know, at an annual consistent amount. So, what, you know, what this is setting you up for is in year 11, I haven't done it yet, but in year 11, you would still be able to keep layering on new debt if you were interested in borrowing it, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of like $4.8 million or something like that. So, so there's a, just the ability, it's a very sustainable borrowing pattern. And that's, you know, partially because of your existing debt service and the existing downward slope. We can keep building on that going forward, you know, if that's, you know, what you want to do. You know, this, this plan doesn't, you know, contemplate a large building or anything like that, but it contemplates annual regular borrowing and not needing to increase your debt service levy. So, oftentimes, people just stop at the debt service levy, especially people like me who get paid to advise on debt. But, you know, I tried to put this, like, you know, just sort of in perspective. Now, it's not quite as, you know, because we're not raising, you know, the debt service levy, so it's not, it's not terribly exciting. It's not like you're issuing a new, you know, $50 million new jail or something, and, you know, oh, my, what's that going to do to the, you know, the property taxes, because that would be really significant. But, but we wanted to, you know, show you what it looks like overall, you know, what you would be able to expect your total county levy to look like in the era of levy limits. So, you know, most of the county's levy, almost 80% of it, is just operating levy. So, in other words, that's the amount, you know, for the general fund, the human services fund, public works. And that's all subject to levy limits. So, you know, state statutes limits your ability to increase your operating levy by anything really more than net new construction. That's been in statute for quite a while now. But the one thing the statute does allow you to do is whatever your general obligation debt service is, that's what you can levy for. So, if it goes up, you can just, you know, you increase your levy for the new debt service. If your debt service goes down, you have to decrease your levy for the lack of debt service, or the decrease in annual debt service. So, debt service just floats, and your operating levy, which is, you know, 80% of your budget, that, you know, that only gets to grow at, you know, we'll call it 1% a year, or a little less, or a little more, depending on net new construction. But you take the operating levy, and then you take your debt service levy, add them together, that's your total levy, and we're going to kind of just show you what that might look like based on the sort of plan we put in place. Now, here we are, we've got four years of actual operating levy plus an estimate here for 2024 budget. And then after that, um, just, you know, because of the nature of state statutes, I just grow, I just grow your operating budget at an estimate of net new construction, which is just point, I just use 0.7%. So less than 1%. You know, you've been trending a little bit above that, but you know, over the long term, you know, that's maybe not a bad estimate, 0.7%. It's certainly conservative, that's for sure. So that's about, you know, 18.6 million of your, of your operating levy is all subject to levy limits there. Now, bridge aids and library, you know, they're not subject to levy limits, but, um, you know, library's been, you know, kind of growing at a, at a, at a modest amount and it's only 800,000. So, um, you know, it's not materially going to, going to change anything. But, you know, this is a model and we can, you know, put any kind of number in there you like. But it's, it's, it's growing at a, you know, pretty much a similar rate. I, I used a one and a half percent for the library, but, um, just to be, I guess, a little conservative, that's a little higher than it's been. But, uh, you know, we're, we're again, we're showing what that looks like in the future. Because of state constraints, there's just, as long as the state statutes are what they are, you're just limited right now into, into how much you can grow that green portion, that operating portion of the county's levy. And that's why budgets are so tough every year. Because of the inflation, uh, growing at a certain rate. And then we have, you know, net new construction, which is like 1, 1%. So that's what, that's why budgets are very tough every year. So that's the operating levy. On the next page, I've got, uh, this is just a summary of the debt service that you've seen previous. We have the 32.6 million of existing debt and that's the dark blue. And then we've got the 41 million of that royal blue new debt service over the next 10 years. So that's 4.1 million a year, each, you know, on average each year. And as you can see, here's the numbers that, and they add them together, they, they're right at 5.3 million every year and, you know, currently you're 5,165. So you're seeing that's just, I mean, that's just a, a hair higher. So you go to the next slide and you can see we're just, we're adding the two. We are adding the, you know, the roughly the 20 million in operating levy, green, the 5.3 million in the debt service levy. So you see you're at about 25.3 million-ish. And you can see that in dollar terms, that's growing pretty modestly for the most part, you know, a percent, like 1% or less. But we know, um, that sort of between new construction of 0.7% and then whatever inflation is on property values, uh, I just assumed a very modest 1%. So 1% inflation, 0.7% growth, that's like 1.7% a year. So I grew your equalized value at 1.7%. And, you know, your levy's only growing in a little less than 1%. So what will happen in this scenario is your mill rate would go down every year. So your levy would be ticking higher just ever so slightly. And you're, but because equalized value would be growing faster than that, the mill rate would be slowly lowering every year. Now, I personally think that the, the most important number is the dollar amount. Because, you know, just because your house went up in value, it's not like you enjoy paying more property taxes. So, you know, I, I think the key thing is that, you know, under this scenario, you're, you're, uh, there is no, there's no, essentially no growth in the debt service levy and very little growth in the operating levy. So, you know, what we have here is the next page has just got that chart. Kind of like, you know, what I said before, you know, your operating levy is the greens, about 80%, a little less. Here's the blue, you know, the green's growing at 1% a year or so. The blue's not growing at all, just stays at 5.3 million under this scenario. And then on the next page is the last page. It just shows the change in levy, uh, based on the projection. Now, you know, sometimes there might be some little tweak where you get to increase your levy a little bit more for something, or you choose to borrow more for something or what it is. But, you know, under this scenario, just with all the constraints that exist in local government, county government, um, you know, this, this is, you know, a pretty reasonable estimate of, of how life would be. So, uh, like I said, this was just, uh, what I, you know, for a county in your sort of general position, with my understanding of your, you know, just your basic ongoing capital needs, this is what I thought was a good baseline, something for the supervisors to consider. And, uh, you know, you can, we can run different scenarios with different dollar amounts over time. Uh, obviously if you borrow, you know, 4.1's an average. If you borrow less than this sort of, uh, for a while, you'll have sort of more powder to work with in the future. If you borrow a little bit more than 4.1 million a year, uh, and you want to stay at 5.3 million, well, in some out years, maybe you don't get to borrow quite as much. So, but, uh, and, you know, there's nothing magical about this. A lot of times people get in these scenarios and, um, they stay at 5.3 million for a little while, then they got some other needs or inflation comes up and then maybe you're ticking up to 5.5 million, 5.75 million, you know? But you, but you're, you're doing it in, in a, with a plan that's incremental and, um, and, uh, you know, doesn't have a big, number one, you don't see fluctuations in the debt service that you're levying for, but you're, so not, fluctuation meaning up or down. So, you know, typically you want to keep it steady, just slowly rising if that's, if that's necessary, you know, to meet your capital needs. And the other thing about this is I think the, the nice thing is that you can engage in some long-term capital planning if you know that you have a certain kind of annual supplemental borrowing amount. So, you know, right here, we just have 3, 3, 4, 4, 4 million a year type of stuff. So, you know, that would give your, and people in highway and, you know, their departments like a, a, a baseline for, for their long-term capital planning. So I think that's, you know, another benefit to the, to the process. Instead of starting every year over, you can actually start every year with knowing your debt service levy is going to be 5.3 million and knowing that we've got 3 million of, 3 or 4 million dollars of proceeds to supplement the county's capital program. So, um, that's the end of my presentation. I don't know if, I don't know if there'd be questions or if that's the end. It could lower a little. It, um, very lit, you know, very negligible impact from the borrowing, certainly.
Any questions? I'm seeing a lot of processing and not a lot of questions. Supervisor Hagan.
Hi, I'm doing both, both processing and questioning. So if my questions sound a little, um, not pertinent, then forgive me. Um, one of the things on page six were the example of the annual borrowings years 2024 to 2023. I just had a question, um, in regards to real dollar amounts in comparison to inflation. Would, as processing, would it make sense? Would it be more bang for our buck if we go for the 4.1 mark in the first couple of years instead of the 3.0 or the 4.0 mark? Um, just so that, uh, we have more real dollars to utilize versus what the inflation rate in the future would look like? Does that make sense, my question?
Yeah, so the, the reason. If you were to go to page, well, I will just, I will answer your question, just sort of explaining why that I came up with the numbers that I did. And there's nothing magical about them, but there is something about the fact that the first couple of years are lower than the average, okay? So if you look on, uh, you know, if you were to look on page five, you could, you can see that the existing debt service in '23, '24, '25 and '26 is all about the same every year. And we didn't want to grow the county's debt service, okay? So if you look at page seven, you'll see that I, um, I had to, to meet the objective of this, you know, self-imposed about 5.3 million. I didn't amortize any principal the first two years on the 2024 borrowing. And I didn't amortize any principal just in the first year on the 2025 borrowing. So I had to defer principal a little bit in those first two years. And that's why I just, you know, you, you used a slightly smaller than average number in, in those first years. So we, you know, we, we could borrow, you know, we could put a little bit more ex, you know, we could borrow 3.5 million in those, those first years or borrow the full 4.1, but we would be, we'd be, um, you know, you sort of need, you sort of need a couple of years to get past the plateau here of the existing debt. So that, I mean.
And it's, it's worth noting that, um, that 3 million kind of rough baseline came out of the capital improvements projects discussion that this board has had in the past as a reasonable, sustainable amount. And as it turns out this year, with the very large highway projects we have, 3 million is just about what we're looking for. Um, we're going to have to figure out how to do that, basically.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think for my processing, I was thinking, um, the rate of numbers, what would we be able to comfortably go up without affecting, um, our, um, obligations later on down the line? So like our high ceiling without affecting the further numbers.
Sure. And we could just run some scenarios, like, you know, if you wanted to see 4 million, you know, every year, 4.1 million every year, we could kind of just see what that would look like.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Supervisor Lee now.
On page 11, uh, fiscal charges, is this based on the bond expense per year, that 9,000? Or is just this a service charge?
So, uh, I mean, it's a great question. So your, when, when you levy for debt service, you can levy, um, I mean, it's, the statute's a little vague, but, you know, a, a lot of counties will levy for the charge that you will, might pay a bank to act as an intermediary to take your payment and get it to the depository trust company. So maybe, you know, those are $600 a year per debt issue or something like that. So, uh, a lot of times, you know, the counties will just put this, you know, that reflects, you know, I guess that reflects $1,500 per debt issue for the six debt issues, uh, that you have outstanding. So which is probably a slightly high estimate. But, um, but, but essentially there's some banks out there that have nothing to do with us that you just have existing relationships with. And I think it's, uh, uh, you know, generally it can be a good idea. These banks will act as an intermediary between you and where you have to get your money to, to pay investors. And it's, it's just, it's like insurance because it's not, they're not, this depository trust company is not the easiest company to work with if you have a question. So sometimes it's just safer to pay a little extra, you know, a small amount to a bank and they take care of it for you. And, uh, anytime you do a bond call, a prepayment, they just deal with all that stuff and you don't have to do it yourself. So that's what that is.
Okay. So that doesn't necessarily cover the expense charge of creating the new bond issue?
Correct. There's, yeah, so they'll always, yes, I mean, professionals, uh, exist and professionals get professional services fees for, for creating a bond issue. You know, oftentimes, you know, we might, you know, the, the, the rate we used in here is 4%. So let's just say in reality, if interest rates are really 3.7%, right, when you, when you use a rate of four, if investors are getting 3.7% and you model out 4%, that will cover the expenses. So, I mean, you can just add a little to the interest rate and that just covers essentially your expenses. But, uh, so, and, and, um, and, and just to put it another way, expenses are paid for out of the bond issuance, if that makes sense.
So that's all wrapped up in the bond fees together?
Yeah, so, um, it all depends on how you think about it. Bonds are, they're just so unique, each, each issue's a little bit unique. But let's just say, in just really rough terms, if you borrowed, if, uh, if you had $80,000 in fees on a $4 million bond issue or 70,000, whatever it turned out to be, between the lawyers, the rating agency, municipal advisor and the underwriters. I mean, there's a lot of, there's, there's at least four groups on here. And if they got 20,000 apiece, I would certainly not, uh, you know, that, that's kind of in the ballpark type of thing. You could, essentially, you would get, um, if you were buying 4 million even, maybe you would only get 3,920. And then the 80 would pay the, uh, print of the, the professional services. Or just as long as I'm here, and how often am I going to get here and bore you guys to tears? But there's, there are these ways that you can create a premium on a debt issue where you might borrow, you know, uh, 4 million exactly, but there's a little bit of a premium built in due to the, due to the, some of the, the, the way you calculate interest. And in other words, there'll be a few extra premium dollars available to pay, um, issuance expenses. So long story short, if you just, you think what the investors are going to get you, add a little percent, a little, a little cushion to that, that'll get you to, uh, your total average borrowing rate.
So let me ask you this, is that, uh, over time, if we're borrowing quite a bit of money over five, six, seven years, um, does the county have any leverage to maybe back that fee off?
Well, you know, there are four fees. There is a fee for your rating agency, uh, that's not negotiable. There's an underwriter's fee and that fee is, gets competitively bid, so that's set by the market. There's a, uh, you know, whatever the bids come in at, the bids come in at, right? We, it's put out to bid, so, you know, lowest, lowest rate including fees wins. There is a bond council fee. And, uh, I guess I would suggest, I haven't seen that have been subject to negotiation. And then our, our, our fee is the last fee. So, um, we do have a fee schedule. I guess we can talk with, with the county about that. But, um, it is a, um, I, uh, I'm not going to say this, I don't think there's a ton of room. I think, I, I don't think there's a ton of room for, for negotiation. I mean, to, to, to be frank, um, from the, you know, especially from the four different parties.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Supervisor Hagan.
Hi, sorry again. Um, I don't know if this is a question more of an observation or just processing as well. Um, but most of these numbers are projections going out 10, 20 years, uh, some of these. Part of what I'm envisioning is years, some of these. Part of what I'm envisioning is that the recessions that we've had, like in 92, 2000, 2008, 2018 or so, 19. These numbers, do you, not this specifically, but do you have any experience or knowledge of these previous recessions in comparison to projections like this from in the past? Like, is that anything you could speak to?
Well, it's an interesting thing. You know, we, the debt service, okay, is, is assuming a 4% borrowing rate over 10 years. So, could it be, you know, could it be higher? Sure. It's, it's certainly been on average lower, right? But we're in kind of a different interest rate environment, we don't know how long this is going to last. So I don't, you know, it's hard for me to predict rates in, you know, five years from now, right? But I think 4% is a pretty reasonable estimate. So I guess what I would say from your perspective, the most important thing is that we're not, really not increasing the amount of debt service levy. So whether really house prices went up 10% again next year, you, you, you're, you're, well, let me say this, if all real estate went up 10% next year, no one's bill would change, right? Because you're levying 5.3 million. What happens sometimes is, this latest sort of market cycle is residential real estate has gone up tremendously, commercial generally not. So there has been a general shifting of the property tax levy from everybody to a little bit towards residential, just because the value of residential homes have, has increased, you know, at a rate faster than commercial has.
Well, and I, I think we're probably starting to get a little beyond the scope of the, the presentation, so I think I'll rein it in there.
That's fine, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much.
Well, it was a pleasure.
That was very informative.
Thank you so much.
All right. Again, Brian, thank you for making the trip from Milwaukee to come and speak with us. And now I would invite Beata to come and show us how this all fits together potentially.
Good evening. As we're getting the PowerPoint presentation, I want to say thank you, Brian, for doing an amazing work. So Brian and I are going to be working very closely as we get into next, I know we haven't even completely finished 2024 budget, but we are also looking ahead. So when CIP season comes, we're also going to be doing a lot of this modeling to see what our debt will look like, because for CIP might require borrowing in addition to perhaps possibly for the, in addition to the highway projects. So I prepared you a PowerPoint presentation. So there's only nine slides. So I'm just going to give you a little bit of a, a slide here. What is my intent here tonight is just to give you an overview of our Dunn County funding sources, what our disbursements look like. We'll touch base a little bit on our county levy limits and that, specific to us, and county general fund, where we are at, how we've been trending. Also, we're going, I'm going to introduce you some of the assumptions we've made when we build the 2023 budget, and also review the Dunn County proposed 2024 budget. So you've received an email, I believe, from Andrew that provided you a link to a Google Drive. And in that Google Drive, you have a lot more supporting documents. And I've created one for each department, so you can content yourself looking in a lot of details. I've also provided you an handouts. That, this PowerPoint presentation is also on the Google Drive that you can access as a reference. But we printed you two handouts that kind of will show you that higher level budget. And also, one slide, that's just, the numbers are really small. So we wanted to be easy on your eyes, so we did a printout. So then again, just to kind of revisit where we are at with levy limit and debt. So as of, this is based on our recent audit report of 2022 by our new auditors. So we have a preliminary levy limit of 23.7 million, and that has slightly increased from last year, well, from 2021. I'm sorry, from 23. I can't get, I've got ears all straightened out. So what we have outstanding for debt, and this is per audit report as of December, end of 2022, it was that 32.7 million, if I round. So we have our general obligation debt, it's at that 4 and 1/4% of the overall debt limit of 214 that we can borrow, and that's based on the 5% of the equalized value. So we have unused debt of 176 million. Doesn't mean we go out there and we borrow, but this is our limit. And also, I just kind of revisit this, and also, that's something we're really proud of, is our rating. Right now, we are at AA, which is very stable. And part of Brian coming in our team, we just want to make sure that we are in a really healthy financial positions as far as the debt is concerned, so that we can take advantage of some of those good interest rates that might be available with our rating. I guess I'm the one that's switching the slides, I was waiting for somebody else to do it. Okay. So let's, I want to also revisit, what does our Dunn County fund balance look like? So we have quite of a healthy fund balance. Our general fund balance is at 19.3 mil. I'm just rounding numbers here. So we increased that by 2 point, roughly $2 million. Part of that 2.2 million, we have carryforwards. And what carryforwards are, when those get approved, those are being put into an assigned fund balance, meaning they've been designated and assigned to a particular purpose or purchase. But the unassigned fund balance, this is the 14.2 million, and that is available to spend, which is, in this case, as the name suggests, is not assigned to any other commitments. So where we are at with our percentage rate, so we know that the percentage of unassigned fund balance to our general fund expenditures, it's very healthy at 5.64. And that's, I'm sorry, oh, 6.4. What did I say? Okay, I'm eating out numbers. I should have ate dinner, because it looks like I'm eating letters and numbers. So it's 56.64%, very healthy, because the recommended is between that 25 and 33. This is something that we hold dear and very proud of. Now, this kind of continues is what happened in 2022. So we also, you know, put back some of it to our general fund. Human services had some savings there, and other departments that equated to 1.6 mil. So this is a handout that I kind of provided for you, because this gives you that 11-year trend, how we've been doing with our fund balance, the general fund balance, and there is the unassigned fund balance, and our rate, how we've been in comparison to our general fund expenses. Okay. And on the other far side, I just wanted to let you know what is our debt limit, and how that has been trending. And I use the equalized value off of IRS website. DOR, Department, Wisconsin Department of Revenue. Brian is making me nervous, that's what this is. Okay, I'm just, just kidding. So some of the assumptions that we've made during our budget process is we, our wages, which makes a big part of our expense, we build in a mid-grade increase to 2% and a step increase. So that's already built in what we're presenting today. Zero increase to our health insurance costs, so that's remaining the same. And then we've also looked at our, what we call wage variable. So it equates to 2.1 million. And what that is, that if we were to fill every single position, including the vacancies that we have, in comparison to what actually happens. So on the bottom there, kind of gives you a little bit of a trend, how we've been trending to the budget for wages and benefits fringes to the actuals. So we've estimated that 4.332%. We were very conservative in this area to adjust that, to apply that wage variable to our budget, meaning that we not expecting to spend that money. So in 2023, its projected number is at 11.2%. So here's our, I highlighted all our revenues and our expenses. And I've identified fund balance for CIP, because this got approved a couple months ago. And I've also identified what the expenses for capital improvement side. And I also separated out highway construction, so you can kind of see what makes up that, part of that number. So we have a net variance of 6.9 million. Yes. Which this slide? Oh, yes, the fund balance, I'm sorry. That, that's correct. That is the unassigned. That's the money that at that time was available. Okay, I'm sorry. The, the revenue, fund balance for CIP, that money is going to come from a fund that is specific for IT and specific to highway. So it's not the unassigned, because we've already designated those funds for a specific purpose. Sorry about that. Yes, thank you. And of course, I hide it out here separate, what is our debt application. So we have a gap of 6.9 million to close. So we've met with the executive committee, and some of the recommendations that were is to decrease the new position requests. So one position was eliminated, that was requested by the sheriff's office. There were two, but only one was recommended to go through. We've also eliminated one position request in admin. Instead, it was replaced with an annual of $25,000 to cover some of the additional costs that might relate to some of the tasks that might be needed. And also, part of the Google Drives, I provided you a document that has more details about those position requests. We also went through, as time went by, we had new updates for our operating expenses. And I think I skipped human services. Human services also requested to position, positions, and out of those two, one was recommended that starts mid-year. So that's also reflected in, in that numbers that you saw in the previous slide. New updated revenue streams require us to kind of make that update to the corresponding expenses. We also analyzed our vacancy positions and eligible benefits. We have vacancies, we do not, if we budget every vacancy with the assumption that they're going to have a family, that's a substantial dollar amount. So what I did is I did a couple years' analysis to understand out of that population that, or employees, I should just going to call them that, that we have, that are eligible for benefits, what does that look like? Some, because some of them don't elect, some of them take single, and some of them take family. So looking, looking at the data analysis, then I've applied that methodology that for those vacancies, I'm going to budget only that 50% of those vacancies are likely to pick family, 25, single, and 10 that could not elect at all. So the 2024 budget actions considered by the executive committee was, as of, again, end of 2022, we have unassigned fund balance of that 14 million, point, 14.2 mil. Just kind of bringing forward. So we have percentage of the nonassigned being at 56.64%. I believe a month ago, a resolution was put in place on fund balance policy, policy stating that we, that the policy will remain the unassigned fund balance at no less than 35%, but no greater than 50% from our general fund operating expenses. So what does that mean in our budget? In order for us to get to that 50% to where we are, that would mean 1.662 million apply towards our shortfall. Okay? So now, after this executive meeting, right away, I was so excited, I went into my office and start balancing the budget. So that's what you have today, proposed. So what we did is we applied the wage variance, or wage variable. We also applied, so what I did first is, I kind of worked backwards, meaning that recommendation was to apply debt, did that, went and took care of the applied wage variable. Now, the, there was some money left that we can use from projects. And then my plugin, the last number to balance, arrived at 1.5. Previous slide to get us to 50 was 1.6, but really, what we, what I was able to apply is less. That then brings us to that 50.58. Okay? We have some money left that we had in our capital projects, that we can apply that towards highway projects. So if we add up all those numbers, we back into that 6.9 million dollars to the dollar. There might be some rounding. And that's my, the end of my presentation. And I am ready for your questions.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a hard time following this. And a source of information that I found real valuable is sitting by the door over there, and it's the 2003 Green Book. And it lists everything in here from highways to tax rate to unemployment, to how much travel in and out of your company, your county, as far as living in one county, working another. But, and what we've been talking about here today, there's a big section in the middle here called county debt. And they talk about general obligation bonds, debt per capita. So I assume that that means the general obligation debt that we have per person in the county. Is that correct? Is that what per capita means?
Yes.
Okay. So, and having a hard, this, this, you know, everybody else can get it, but I don't. I look at whether, what other counties are in comparison to Dunn County, and we don't hear much about that. If we look at general obligations debt per capita, you would think that would have to do with, you've got a large number of existing debt, highways and health and human services, and your jails, and everything like that. So if you have less population, you will have more general obligation debt per capita. So when I look at the So when I look at the counties here and I see that Pepin County is at $1,635 per person for their general obligation bonds. And then I look at our neighbor over here to the east, Chippewa County. Chippewa County has more people. They have highway departments, they've got jails, they've got all the fixed costs that county has, but they have more people. So Chippewa County's debt per capita and general obligation is $131 down from Pepins at 1,635. So now let's get real close and personal here with Eau Claire and Dunn County. And of course, we're going to all of a sudden, you know, realize that Eau Claire is going to have less than Dunn County and Eau Claire is $989 and Dunn County is at $1,061. I don't know what that tells me, except that our citizens seem to carry a lot of debt per capita and general obligations. So adding more general obligation debt to me seems to be the wrong direction. Thank you.
All right. Seeing none, let me get back to the agenda here. Let's see, update on the 2024 budget. Chris, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I think the only thing that I would say is you've now seen the recommendation of the executive committee that it's a combination of use of fund balance, some borrowing, some expenditure of some unspent capital improvement funds that remain, a use of the wage variance in order to bring this to a balanced budget for you next November 14th. If you have a strong sentiment that you don't want that to happen, because that will be the recommendation coming forward for you to vote upon, and you have a strong recommendation for that and you would like to seek a different solution, I would ask you to reach out to us immediately. We will have an executive committee meeting before we have a board meeting. This budget will go to publication tomorrow because we have to statutorily, but if you have struck, I think in an effort to avoid getting to the 11th hour and 59 minutes of, you know, and not, and not having agreement on what we are going to do in November, if you have strong sentiments, please talk to us so that we can either address those or deal with, deal with the questions or at least be able to relay that information to the executive committee to potentially make different decisions.
And just to piggyback back what Chris said, the executive committee will meet on Wednesday, November 8th. County Board in November will meet Tuesday, November 14th. So it is a different day next week or next month, Tuesday, November 14th for the budget hearing.
And, and we'll remind you that again, at least once more tonight.
And the reason for that is statutory as well. It's the second Tuesday after the first Monday.
That's the one, that's one of the two the state tells us when to meet. All right then. Supervisor Kinnear and then Supervisor Wilson.
I really hesitated to speak, but it seems like some people must have an opinion right now. Perhaps it's just been a little complicated and our brains are full. The borrowing three, $3 million that Beata talked about is in addition to the three for capital improvements. Is that correct?
No, we're not borrowing money for capital improvements.
There will be no borrowing for capital improvements for 2024?
Right.
Right.
We used a combination of ARPA and those other fund balances, the IT fund and the highway equipment replacement fund.
In your Google Drive, I've also dropped in the CIP as a reference that has some of that detail, but I'll be more than happy to review that with you as well.
Yeah, this is pretty much entirely pavement and it's pretty much projects with state or federal match that we will lose that match if we do not spend.
And as I understand it, if we don't spend, then in the future, we also lose money. Less reimbursement.
More or less, yes. It's a little bit more complex than that, but yes.
Okay. So just, just to summarize now to make sure everybody knows, with this budget, Dunn County would borrow up to $3 million, but that's it.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And again, almost entirely pavement. Supervisor Wilson.
Last fall, we ran into this. So the budget has to pass by a majority or is it three fours?
Two thirds, I believe, for the.
Two thirds. Okay. Thank you.
Oh.
Just one note, well, that's true, the borrowing does require a three quarter vote, so.
Yeah.
Budget is effectively contingent on a three quarter vote. Oh, I kind of.
Good correction. Thank you. So yes, the budget is two thirds, the, any borrowing is three quarters. Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if we borrow you $3 million and we got like a debt service of $5 million, something like that, so what would our total debt be then? Are we going to go down with the total debt at the end of the borrowing and payback? You know what I mean?
So Brian's going to correct me, but I'm, what I'm going to say is every year we're paying off about $5 million and we would.
On principal?
Uh, not, no, in total.
Okay.
Uh, paying, paying about $5 million, about three and a half, I believe. Come talk to the mic. Just because otherwise it doesn't go on a recording.
Oh, well, I'm not sure I want to be recorded.
You're not alone.
So if you look on page four of the handout, you can see at the start of the year, there was 32.6 million outstanding, right? Get out a calculator here. So that was at the start of the year, it was 32.6. You're going to pay four and a half million, or you actually did already this year, paid off four and a half million. So you could take that 32.6, take off four and a half, now you're at, you know, 28-ish million. So you've already lowered your, your debt. Next year, you're, you're scheduled to pay off another four and a half million. Okay, so that, that's nine, that's nine million over the next two years and you'd only be adding three. So your debt, your debt, the amount of debt you have outstanding at the end of '24 would be $6 million less than it was at the end of '22. So your debt is decreasing. Really, now, like I said, there's nothing magical about the, the analysis you saw tonight. Tonight is like a steady state, right? So what I propose is, you know, not, really no change in the amount you're, you're paying every year. So, you know, more or less, you're paying off about what you're borrowing. So, you know, you, at the start of the year, you had 32 million over the next 10 years. I'm suggesting, or this example shows borrowing 41 over the next 10 years. So, you know, more or less, your, your outstanding debt would be kind of similar to, to what it was. I mean, the next two years it would go down, but it would more or less churn along at, at some sort of constant level.
Yeah, the underlying idea of the borrowing structure that was originally proposed with CIP would be, was that we would be paying off around $5 million a year and borrowing around $3 million a year. So over time, those numbers would continue to go down. So the, the goal of CIP was to give us the money we need to do, deal with things like having 420 miles of highway, which is the seventh highest in this, in the state and which we have not been taking care of very well for the last 10 or 15 years, but also to bring the overall debt down over time and to not, if at all possible, raise the average level of taxes on Dunn County citizens. So it's, the plan is to be as conservative as possible and still meet our essentially infrastructure needs.
At least we're trying to, like you lower the debt a little bit, but yet still have the flexibility of borrowing some money. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, and don't hesitate to read out, reach out to Chris or Beata and, and me, and we will work to answer those questions. I will probably, if you reach out to me, mostly throw the questions to the people who know the details, but I will endeavor to do what I can on that front.
Both Chris and I are keeping ourselves busy, but meeting with you, I'll sure make that a priority. I'll, I'll come in person and versus virtual, so I'll accommodate what's needed. So hopefully I'm looking forward to seeing some of you again.
And if you hit her up ahead of time, she'll stop at Festival Foods for some amazing doughnuts on the way.
Ooh.
Yes.
Excellent plan.
Or snacks.
Well, with that, we are on to agenda item nine, reports of departments. We have county fair information technology.
We have Deb on the phone.
Great, there we go.
Remotely.
I was pretty sure it was in the room. So Deb.
Hello there, everyone, or good evening. You have my written report. I guess I would entertain any questions or comments about the report, if anybody has anything regarding the fair this year. As you know, weather was a, was a horrible factor, probably, hopefully this is one of the one in 100 year events that we would have weather wise, but well, we still did our best that we could with the weather there. So does anybody have any questions or anything on the information?
Supervisor Kinnear.
Just want to emphasize part of her report that she probably wouldn't mention again, inducted into the Wisconsin Association of Affairs Hall of Fame for your work, Deb. Congratulations. That's really something.
Oh, excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It was, I was really honored to get that award.
Supervisor Larry Bjork. I also jump on with Mike that Deb, Deb is a real key player in the Wisconsin Association of Affairs and you can see how key she is when she has just left the office and you have a district meeting, which Ron and I went to, Ron Score and I are on the fair board, and who comes and sits down next to Deb with a pad of paper and writing is the new state president. And she's, you know, she, she does a wonderful job. But could I just take a minute and address some of these pictures, Deb?
Absolutely, Larry.
If you get a chance to look at it, I mean, the water, the pictures that she's got there's, you know, the water that was in the infield and the racetrack. That first page is showing different buyers of the meat animal auction. Over on the second page, up in the top right, you'll see woodworking projects and forage and the Dunn County Fair runs on a lot of people doing a lot of things. Elton Hilson's been the forage project leader there at the fair superintendent of woodworking and every year he's there helping kids all along. You move on down, you see a couple of pictures with a couple of young ladies with their small animals and chickens and we are going to have the biggest jump in chickens and rabbits that Dunn County has ever seen coming up next year. Of course, we're at a point where we can go just up. Down in the middle to bottom is Jim Powers talking to a little girl, showing a calf. And this is Little Bridges Program where kids that are pre-aged for forage can come in and show a calf, a rabbit, a chicken, a goat. And Jim, you'll see down there will be eye to eye with them, ask them where they're from, where their parents are and big turnout of grandparents there, I'll tell you that. And it, and it grows every year, but it's really something. On the second page, at the top in the middle, it shows the dog project and here's another key leader, Sandy Miller is, and some helpers, start with these forage kids 12 weeks before the fair, I believe it is, Deb. And they meet and down there in one of the old highway buildings and she teaches, she teaches these kids what it would be expensive to be, to pay for to learn as far as dog obedience, a different thing. Racetrack there in the middle, down on the bottom is the kitty tractor pull. And this is another thing that, program that starts out, it isn't a forage project or anything like that. And there's five or six classes and it's age group and kids and their parents and their brothers and sisters and their grandpas and their grandvas all come and these kids get on these little tractors, different sizes for the kids, and they have like a sliding weight thing there at the bottom. And fantastic thing for people having fun at the fair. The bottom there right is Deb and Derek Wolf, one of our board members and the fairest of the fair. And this was a young lady that was selected from 50 some counties that had a person, just, you know, an ambassador for the state of Wisconsin and state fair. Oh, my golly, there's a picture of Deb showing, what is that, Deb? Is that an airshire?
No, red and white Holstein.
Red and white Holstein. So they even got Deb involved in the show ring. Down the middle here, you'll see this young little gal with a cowboy boots on and the red shirt. And she walked up to me and she says, Larry, how's the fair going? And I watched, maybe six or seven, and I says, how do you, how do you know my name? And she says, well, I saw you here last year. So next there is the memories, great show, people look forward to it. And there's Jim on the bottom talking to a gal with a chicken. But the Dunn County Fair offers a lot of activities for people and boy, it was really sad to not be able to come through with the tractor pull or a couple of nights of racing because people really enjoy it. But it's county money goes into it and I'm just here to tell you it's money well spent.
Thank you, Larry, for that narration of the, of the photo set. Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just want to echo a couple of things that Larry said, especially as a resident a few blocks away from the fairgrounds and, and just how positive it is to see the activity that goes on during the fair and the events leading up to the fair with the things that happen in the horse arena as people, as, as mostly kids are there working with their animals. It's, it's pretty nice to go for a walk at nine o'clock at night and the lights are on and they're out there working their horses and it's just good to see that positive vibe that's happening that's provided by a lot of people that put a lot of hard work in led by you, Deb, and, and the other board members. So thanks for all your work.
Thank you, Supervisor Thomas. Anyone else? Supervisors Dean.
A round of applause would be in order for our Hall of Famer.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it very much.
All right, on to IT. Is, is IT having technical difficulties? Supervisor Steen wants to know if he needs a call.
I'm overmatched running the computer and presenting at the same time, so. So I think most of you have probably met me over time. I'm Dan Dunbar, I'm the Director of the IT Division, which is a division part of the Department of Administration. So inside of IT, we also have a second office called the Land Information Office, which is maybe not intuitive to most, but I did want to kind of call that out, so there's some specific work that goes on within that department. This is our org chart. The areas under the middle and off to the right are more of your traditional IT services, and then we have the Land Information Office on the side. Provided a multi-page report that explains all of that, and I am now ready to read it off to you in front of it now. So, no, so as part of this, you know, we've just been asked to kind of highlight one area within our department, so I'll kind of go through that, but I will tell you that I did cheat, and we're doing two, so that the Land Information Office can also highlight an area within their area, so I'll have their Land Information Officer come by here in a little bit, hit the button. I know how you feel, Biata, looking for somebody else to flip it. So I had to pick one area within IT, so I went through all of the acronyms that we deal with in IT, and I grabbed a dartboard and decided that we would just move forward and pick one. And oddly enough, I picked cybersecurity, which happens to be, happens to be cybersecurity Month in October, so as I have a video here that I'm gonna hopefully be able to play for you, and it's funny, as I put together this whole presentation that I went to, because I knew it was October, it was cybersecurity Month, I went to go find some information for the slides off in SISA, and it turns out somebody actually already did the presentation in a video, so I did figure I'd let you hear it from the professionals here, so. Sound is working too.
Hey, everybody, I'm Jen Easterly, Director of SISA, America's Cyber Defense Agency, and I want to be the first to wish you a happy Cybersecurity Awareness Month. I'm thrilled to get to share with you a little about this year's campaign through this video. This October, we challenge all Americans to help secure our world by adopting four simple steps that everyone can take to stay safe online. First, use strong passwords, meaning long, random, and unique, to each account, and use a password manager to generate them and to save them. Two, one of my personal favorites, enable multi-factor authentication on all accounts that offer it. You need more than a password on your most important accounts, like email, social media, and financial accounts, so enable MFA. Three, recognize and report phishing, as we like to say, think before you click. Be cautious of unsolicited emails or texts or calls asking you for personal information, and don't click on links or open attachments from unknown sources. Finally, number four, update your software. In fact, enable automatic updates on your software, so the latest security patches just keep your devices continuously up to date. We all have a role to play to secure our world. We can all secure our online accounts by practicing basic cyber hygiene, including the four steps I just mentioned, and let's secure our families by ensuring that our loved ones know what to look for and how to stay safe online. Companies also have a role to play to secure our digital world. SISA is asking tech companies and software developers to secure our businesses and our individual customers by ensuring that their products are secure by design. That way, technology is secure right out of the box, and Americans are better protected. We invite families, small and medium businesses, tech providers, government, and international partners, and others to join the campaign and participate in Cybersecurity Awareness Month 2023. Learn more by visiting sisah.gov.
So that video is kind of a good summary, and as I talk about doing, talking about cybersecurity, in the, none of my buttons are working. So as I talk about cybersecurity, it's important, and it's something that we look at every day within IT and everything that we do, and it's, you've probably seen it implemented in many ways within the county, and I will kind of highlight on one of them right here, but it's also important for you to keep in mind, as was stated there, in your personal life and with your families and others. So almost all of the things that you saw in that video and everything that I'm going to show you here is something that applies not only to your role as a supervisor, and you are a target as a supervisor of the county. You need to, you need to keep that in mind as you go forward, but it's also true in your personal life and working with your children, parents, whoever it might be, or we're all kind of targets in this world, and we actually just had an incident happen this week where somebody was trying to get us to pay a bill that didn't really exist. So, I mean, these things are happening, they're happening to the county, they're happening to convenience stores. They finally, I think, came clean that that was a cybersecurity incident with QuickTrip, if you weren't aware. So phishing, phishing is the number-one way that cybersecurity incidents happen. I have a definition of phishing out there, we talk about it all the time, it's essentially just tricking somebody. One of the forms of phishing, there's many different types of phishing emails that go out there, one of the main ones that we see specifically targeted towards the elderly, which is something that we see happening more and more, especially as you get around tax time, as you get around open enrollment, Medicaid, all of these sorts of things, there's a target, and they know when people are waiting to do something, right? We have this schedule, everybody's doing it, everybody knows, right? So some social engineering attack, if you're not familiar with these, these are basic links that people may get emailed to them all the time that says, hey, I shared a file with you, click this button right here to go see that file. This looks 100% legitimate, it is not. These are both fake messages that just look like those emails. So you have to beware of what it is that you're looking at, look at the email, look at who it came from. If you hover your mouse over the button, it will show you the link to that. If it's a link to Office 365 or to Microsoft, say microsoft.com in the URL, and it may say microsoft.com, but it needs to say it in the right spot. So one of the big pieces of advice that I always say is if somebody shares a file with you and you were not expecting that file, give them a call, send them an email, hey, did you share a file with me? And if you are sharing a file with somebody, give them a little heads up before you send them this random email to be able to do that. I know Chris has probably seen it, I'll send her a message that I'm sharing a file with you, and that means that that email is legitimate, right? So just kind of being careful about those messages. The next example I kind of want to go over, and this kind of leads more into that personal life, and have this quote up here, my Facebook's been hacked, please ignore any messages. Anybody in the room ever heard anybody that said that or seen that message on Facebook, right? We've all seen it. Has anybody had to send that message? You don't have to call yourselves out, but it's something that happens, right? So how does that happen? Basic Facebook message, hey, you got some updates, click this button to go log into Facebook to see them. That wasn't Facebook. So you click the link, you go to a page, you type in your username and password, but you were not on a Facebook page. You just gave somebody your username and password. That's how people's credentials get stolen. You give them away. So you need to know where it is that you're typing these things in. If it's a weird scenario, hey, most of the time when I click this in Facebook, I don't have to log in, how come I have to log in this time? That's something that should raise your heckles to say, wait a minute, something's up here, and I need to look at that in a different way. So that's just the basic thing, that's the same thing that would happen with an Office 365 where your county credentials could be stolen or the Google Drive or something like that. So be aware of those and share the word. So what are we going to do about that? Part of that is happening right now, education. You're all signed up, you're all getting fake phishing emails from us every month, and you're also getting trainings every month, so quick little videos that are going to show you what you should look for in an email, how do you find those different things, those things that you need to look for to know that you haven't been tricked. Education, step one, next one is multi-factor. You heard it in the video, I just helped a couple of people set it up here earlier today. We did implement multi-factor within the county for every single employee and all of our county supervisors. You talk about it a lot, we see MFA, multi-factor, a little while in a previous place, we called it two-step authentication because it's two steps to be able to do that. There's a whole marketing campaign around the two-step and whatnot. But what multi-factor is, there's three factors, something you have, something you are, and something you know. So in the case, something you know is traditionally your password, so that's something that you know, as long as you didn't give it away, that's just something that you know, and nobody else knows. Something that you have, so we're implementing multi-factor, kind of targeting using smartphones because that's something that you have, that you typically have with you, so it's easy to use. There's other forms that we can do, some people have the little fob, I have some in the back, if you want to see what they look like, to be able to do that, and the final one is something you are, and so that's a biometric. These computers don't support them, some that we have in the county do actually support biometrics where we can log in with our fingers, so as long as somebody didn't steal your finger, you're going to be okay. But multi-factor is any two of them. So two passwords is one factor, so you have to have something you know and something you have, or something that you know and something that you are, something that you are and something that you have. Those combinations work, but two passwords doesn't. Next step, so I will highlight a little bit of what we've done in the county, so we did enroll, we did roll out multi-factor to everyone in the county this year. All the county accounts are enrolled, and that is in front of all of our major systems, so it's in front of our email, it's in front of SAP, it's in front of Amazon, a lot of those high-target areas that could lead to the extraction of data or money. So that's kind of my highlight right there, is to just kind of go over multi-factor authentication, some of the phishing trainings that we've gone over. We do lots and lots of things as it relates to security, but this is, as you saw, I didn't tell her what to put in that video, this is what's there, and one of the most important things and easiest things that we can do and everybody can do. So with that, I'm going to move on, I'm going to introduce you to Rachel Wells, I think this is my last slide, right? Well, and one more, these are the four things that you can do, this is straight from the SISA website and highlighting those things that were in the video. So with that, we'll move on. Rachel Wells is our Land Information Officer. Rachel's been with the county for longer than me, seven-ish years, and is somewhat new to your role, and about a year as the role of the Land Information Officer, so I will leave it to her.
Hi there. As Dan mentioned, I'm Rachel Wells, Land Information Officer. And within our land information team in IT, there are two others, we have Sarah Hansen, she's our real property lister, and then Brittany Ricky, she's our GIS specialist or GIS technical specialist. Within our team, helps if I do this, right? Here we go. Within our team, we're responsible for carrying out the initiatives within the Wisconsin Land Information Plan, and the county has its own plan that's specific to us, it's a three-year directional plan that defines what are the data sets and information that we want to maintain, develop, make available, increase accuracy to, and make that information available to internal departments and to the public, and that's all related to land records, so property information, anything that you can map on the land that's related to a record, that's what we are responsible for taking care of. We also carry out the GIS work within the county, so anything related to mapping, again, address points, street center lines, properties, things like that, district boundaries, municipality boundaries, those are things that we all will take care of. We also are responsible for maintaining the land records management system, so within that, your property IDs, property descriptions, anytime a document is recorded at the Register of Deeds office, whether that's a deed or a split or a land division, we make sure that those changes get implemented into the assessment system to facilitate the taxation process, and then also update any of the district changes that happen on those properties to districts, school district changes, things like that, we make sure that they're updated in that system. We also administer Chapter 23 of the Dunn County Court of Ordinances, which is commonly known as rural addressing, so those fire numbers that you see out in the countryside, we are responsible for assigning those house numbers and the street names within all towns and ordering those signs for fire numbers. We're also a geospatial resource for any of the county departments, so if anyone has a question on anything related to GIS, we will help them and either help do that work or teach them how to do that for themselves. So we had to highlight a program, so we thought that rural addressing would be a good one. So for some background, in 1991, Dunn County adopted Uniform Numbering System, rural addressing, in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes 5954. This applies to all towns in Dunn County, so it doesn't apply to villages and cities, so each city and village has their own addressing authority, but we coordinate with them as well, just so that we have that up-to-date information from them. Since 2010, this program has been carried out by the Land Information Team, but it started out in the zoning office. Part of that transition was because the technology had changed, and it made sense for that assignment to take place in an office that also matched those points within a system that ultimately gets into the emergency management system and the land records management system for assessment and taxation. Right now, applicants, so a landowner can apply for an address online, we have a form available, they can also mail in a form for us or to us, and they can also come in person, we actually have quite a bit of people who come in in person, and that applies to new addresses and replacements. Some of you may be familiar with the grid, but maybe not all of you, but we issue all addresses in accordance with the grid, so if you are out driving, roads that are predominantly running north and south are streets, and ones that are predominantly east and west are avenues, and they're all numbered. For streets, if you continue north, the numbers will increase for your house numbers. If you're on an avenue and you're driving to the east, those numbers will increase as well. So our grid starts in the southwest corner of the county and then moves kind of to the northeast, so that's how addresses are assigned. So here's kind of a demonstration of that. So we start in our southwest corner with our ends at the 100, and we increase all the way to 14,500, and then we start on the west for our E's at 100 and move to 10,100 as we move to the east. So this address here is for Hoffman Hills, and they have an address of E 7501, 730th Avenue, and that address for the house number is largely based on the position of their driveway, where it connects to that town road, because in the countryside, we tend to have like longer driveways, so the thing that's most visible to someone along the roadway is where that driveway meets the roadway, so that's how an address number gets assigned. So some statistics, in 2023, this year to date, we've had 166 applications, of those 128 were new, the others are replacements. The replacements are requested by landowners, and there's a fee of $30 to replace those. But how many address points we actually maintain in our office is just shy of 19,000, so included within that 19,000, there are almost 12,000 that are in the towns, which we take care of, but then there are, the remainder are between villages and the city, and so we are constantly talking with villages and the city for new addresses that they've assigned, new streets that they've created, and then we also, for both smaller like communities that don't issue addresses very often, will give them advice as well. It may be they haven't issued an address in 10 years, they don't know what to do, so we will help them as much as we can. And then in terms of streets, almost 5,300. And yeah, just stating that we- And yeah, just stating that we coordinate with those addressing jurisdictions every week to make sure that we're having up-to-date information. But ultimately, all of this information ends up within the land records management system for the tax and assessment system, but also within the emergency management system so that if someone needs a call for service for EMS or fire, they know exactly where they are. So that's why it's that important service and why it has to be a uniform numbering system that it follows. So, yeah. And then this is just a historical summary of address applications that we've processed since 2016. Eighty-eight back in 2016, and this year 166. Any questions? A historical summary of address applications that we've processed since 2016. Eighty-eight back in 2016, and this year 166. Any questions?
We forgot to give the question.
We did. We didn't, we didn't done anything, but.
Supervisally now.
Yeah. I noticed in the report that there were new aerial photos. How do we access them?
You know what? Yes. I didn't even, I didn't even make a point of mentioning it, but, so the Dunn County GIS site is maintained by our office, and that's one of the most used resources, I think, that people are common with. So we make that information available online to the public via the Dunn County website. There's actually, on that main black bar, there's a button that says GIS, and it goes to a map, and it'll show you all of the imagery. Right now, we have imagery from 2020 going back to 1992. We don't have, we don't get imagery every year. It's on a regular cycle. But the new imagery will be available on an updated GIS site that should be released in early November. We've been testing it for a few weeks now, and it's looking very good, but that 2023 imagery will be available there. It's actually kind of neat, the new site will have a slider where you can select two years of imagery and then slide between to see the land change. So, but yeah, we collect imagery on a regular basis in accordance with the three-year directional plan, and that directly goes to the website for public use, but then it goes within the emergency management system and then is used internally for different land use applications and things like that as well.
All right. And that's directly on the Dunn County website itself?
Yes. Yep.
Can't see the new stuff yet.
Yeah, the new, the new, the new GIS website will be released in November, so the 2023 imagery will be on that one. But how you will get to it will still be from the Dunn County website through the same GIS button. It'll just take you to a new site.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Of course. Question as far as the addressing and how it has changed over the years from fire numbers? And do, at one time Elk Mountain had a different set of numbers than Menominee Fire Department. Are they, if you call, if you call and says, "My place is on fire," what do they need to know?
So the fire numbers that they have are their physical addresses, so they should be the same one that they're receiving mail to if it's someone's residence. So if I live at E 7501, 430th Avenue or 730th, that would be the address that is provided. But they can also, when they're getting a call in from like someone in the location, it pulls in location information as well. So there's some information that comes across in addition to the information that the caller is provided, providing.
So I'm on 430th, just so you know. Okay. Do they ever have a thing, is there a thing, is there decision made on if you're, which fire department can get to your place closer, faster?
Oh, this would be a good question for emergency management, but yes. So one of the data sets that we also maintain are the service boundaries, and that has been in collaboration with the emergency management department since 2008. So we actually know which service providers are within that call range, and the dispatch team is who makes that choice. It'll suggest based on where that call is coming in, but depending on the type of call, as I understand it, and again, Melissa's team would be the best to do this, but they will send additional teams as well depending on that type of service call. But there are actually like geographic boundaries that show this is Menominee Fire Service territory, this is Elk Mounds, this is the ambulance service, and this is, you know, law enforcement. So there's different layers for all those.
And $30 for a new number of mine that all look bad.
I know. So the responsibility of replacing them is on the landowner. So we actually have been talking about ways that we can encourage people to replace it because sometimes people don't know who to call first. So some of it's getting information out to like the towns specifically to send out in maybe their newsletters or posting it online, but it is, it is $30. A lot of them are, I should have highlighted the one that I had in there, but some, some are long past their life and they've faded completely to white, but yes.
I know what to give my wife for her birthday.
Yep, that's how you show your love.
I'm sure that'll go over real well. Supervisor Headland.
Thank you. And I think Rachel referred to it a little bit. Part of that, Larry's question is that the townships have the ability to choose their provider in ambulance and fire. And so if you look at the Village of Wheeler, Boyceville is their fire service, and Colfax is their ambulance service.
Yep.
And that's determined by the municipality.
Yep.
So that's that question where they look and say, "Who's preferred by distance?" But it not, might not be the preferred provider, they'll contact preferred provider first.
Yep. Yeah, it's again, a good emergency management question, but yes, you're correct. The municipalities do decide whose services, what areas. I think some townships are even split specifically because geographically it makes more sense for a different provider to serve the northern region. Like if you're, have a water body that cuts through it, then it makes sense for you to have a different service provider. But yeah, your municipality decides that.
Supervisor Steen.
Piggyback on what Vaughn said, the town attainer was served, served by the Colfax Fire Department. They opted to go with the Menominee Fire Department, but on the eastern side attainer, Colfax gets there quicker than they do anyway. But like Vaughn said, the township made that choice, so.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, very nicely done, and my compliments to whoever selects the relatively funny security videos. They're so much better than many that I've had to deal with in the past.
Well, I just got the whole set for, for the next cycle. Sorry, I got the site for the next cycle, and there's even more humorous. I actually made a comment to them that, I said, "Some of these just seem a little too goofy for me." Like I have a hard time even sending them out, but they assured me that people like the humor, so.
Yes, I find myself actually paying attention as opposed to skimming it with one eye, so. Okay, so that ends item nine, item 10, consideration of reports, resolutions, and ordinances to the county board from the committee, presumably the executive committee. Resolution, 2023 budget adjustment for sheriff administration. These are all pretty routine, money comes in, money goes out. We have to keep the books straight. This is a roll call vote. We will do it with the technology. But we will, yeah, that was next. I will need a motion in a second. Supervisor Morehouse beat you to the punch, and Supervisor Bauer got the second in first. So Andrew is now getting it all set up. Supervisor Morehouse.
Is he busy? Oh, I was just wondering, Andrew, if you might provide some instruction to our new members on how to do this?
Yes. Oh, excellent.
Even some of our older members?
Very exciting, yes. So I'm going to activate the voting now. If you tap your screen, you should be able to see the options to vote, yes, no, or if you want to abstain. So tap your screen to activate it, select your option, and then it will cast your vote. Oh, and while they're, while they're doing that, Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson votes yes, and Supervisor Robinson?
Yes.
Supervisor Robinson votes yes as well. Oh, and Supervisor, did Sean Breslin ever end up joining us? Supervisor Sean Breslin? I don't think so.
He did not.
Okay. All right. That, that is approved.
All right. Motion passes. Item 11, consideration of reports, resolutions, and ordinances coming to the county board from the standing committees. Committee on Administration. We've got three here. Ordinance amendment to 7606, code of marriage license fees, first reading, I'll need a motion in a second. Supervisor Headland moves. Supervisor Zahn seconds. Speaking to the motion, Andrew, since it's a clerk thing.
It's a clerk thing. So updating this ordinance, 7.6.06 is relating to marriage licenses. We haven't had an update to this ordinance in many years, and subsequently with the approval of marriage equality by the Supreme Court in 2015 and the Obergefell de Hodge case, domestic partnerships are no longer recognized within the state of Wisconsin. If you had filed a domestic partnership between the timeframe in which it was approved, those will stay on file forever unless they are, not after divorce, unless they have been terminated, unless the couple chooses to terminate their domestic partnership. There are 20.
What? I said, or superseded by marriage license.
Correct. If they decide to get married, then the, it would be superseded. There are currently 28 different domestic partnerships on file in Dunn County. So this is just cleaning up some language in addition to the fact that the marriage license waiver timeframe went from five days to three days. You used to have to wait five days to get married, now you have to wait three days. It might change again next year, might be back with this, we'll see. There's some legislation going on with that as well. But, and then it's also being, we're trying to, the county clerks across the state, last year, the law changed where instead of applying for the license, a marriage license in the county in which you reside, you can actually apply for a marriage license in any county in the state of Wisconsin. So to make sure that we're all trying to be equitable, all the county clerks are trying to go to a standardized fee across the state. So our marriage license fees are currently $90. This ordinance would change it to $100, which would be similar to St. Croix-Chippewa, Eau Claire, all of our surrounding counties, not Dane or Milwaukee County, they like to do their own thing, but we're just trying to do some standardization. So that's what that is. Any questions?
Supervisor Patrick Breslin.
Andrew, I apologize. Just me, but under B, it states an additional fee of $25, and then when you go down to the next page, under background, in the second paragraph or whatever, let's see, it says a, an additional fee of $10. So which is it?
Yeah, it gets confusing. So the state statutes set the minimum fee that a marriage license must cost, right? And then in addition to that, so the marriage license minimum fee is 40, $45.50.
And that's bumping that up to 50 and 50.50.
Correct, yes.
And then you'll have an additional fee from the county of X.
Yes, to get it to 100.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. And then just so you're aware, the fees currently at $90, $25 of it goes to the state, $45 of it is retained with the county, and $20 of the marriage license fee actually goes to the clerk of courts. It's, it's a little front payment in case there's a separation down the road. So that's how that would be. The clerk of courts fee would stay the same, it would just be additional money for the office.
All right, thank you. This is first reading, so we will vote on this next time around. A2, resolution adopting health benefit premiums. Again, I will need a motion in a second. Supervisor Morehouse, Supervisor Lino. Speaking to this one, Supervisor Headland?
Yeah, and if I can. Is our personnel director here?
She's online.
She's online, okay. I guess what I would say is, are there any questions at this point? And if so, if I can't answer them, I know that she can.
That seems very reasonable. All right, then we can go ahead and vote on this one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. A3, resolution amending.
Kelly. Kelly? Can I just say one thing? I just want to commend Jenna and her team because they've worked really, really hard to address the benefit package for county employees and to have a zero increase in our health premiums and to be able to provide some additional incentives for smart shopping, reducing deductibles and maximizing or, and reducing our maximum out-of-pocket expenditures is a, was a great undertaking and I think will be well received.
Yes, absolutely. They've been doing some amazing work over the last two or three years on, on that whole front, just outstanding stuff. Thank you for bringing that forward. A3, resolution amending employee handbook, night differential in highway. I will need a motion in a second. Supervisor Bauer, Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Headland, did you want to throw yourself on this one?
Yeah. It's, it's in your packet, and a simple explanation is the state came along and said, "Okay, for well-traveled highways, which include state highway or federal highway interstate system, it is too busy during the day to do your patchwork and repair work that is designated and asked for by the state of the county to do." And so now it has to be done at night from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and so there's some additional staff required and so forth, then we're opting to increase that premium pay just for that service, half of which will be paid by the.
Pay by us. Obviously, something got mandated by the state for closer.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spent a lot of nighttime hours on the interstate, and highway safety is a big deal to me. And anytime that you go to a site where they're, say, educating high school drivers ed classes about highway safety, every, every slide that shows a reduction in lanes is, the road is covered with black marks. So those black marks are there because people aren't paying attention and breaks are applied. So my question though has to go to hours of service prior to starting a shift to work at night. Is there regulations to that? I mean, do workers have to be off so many hours before they can take a nighttime shift?
Thank you, Supervisor Bjork, and it has just been brought to my attention that Chris' very timely interruption to remind us of how much amazing work you had done came right as we were about to vote on that last one. So all in favor of the previous motion?
The previous motion being the adoption of the 2024 health benefit premiums, just so we're all aware.
Yeah, just want to make sure that we actually vote on that. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Motion passes and mea culpa. All right. And now on the next motion, the one adopting the, gotta get back to my agenda here, the night differential in highway. Any further discussion?
Is there a motion?
Yes, Supervisor Bauer moves. Supervisor Headland seconded it.
All right, seeing no further discussion, all is in favor? All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Great, thank you. All right, on to 11B, facilities, ordinance regulating hours and use of county parks. Second reading, and I believe Supervisor Gary Bjork has an amendment that he would like to propose.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the proposed ordinance by changing Section 2 of the ordinance by deleting subsection A, B, and C, and changing Section 2 to read, county parks and landings shall be open at all times unless otherwise posted, except as follows. No person may enter or be within the boundaries of Caddywood Land Park during hours of darkness. And B will still be the same as the other C. The facility department or the county sheriff or their designated shall have full authority to close any park or part of a park at any time in case of emergency or where circumstances require it in order to protect the public or park facilities.
Thank you, Supervisor Bjork. Is there a second to Supervisor Bjork's motion to amend? Supervisor Keneer seconds. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? All right. All those in favor? Any opposed? The amendment passes. All right, we are now on the second reading and the actual vote on the ordinance as amended. Any further discussion there? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion also passes. All right. That takes us to announcements, at which point I'm going to remind you all again that next month's meeting will be a Tuesday, November 14th, because the state wants us to have it on a different day. Really don't forget. I have been one of the people who forgot that about 10 years ago, and I am embarrassed to this day. And it will be 7:00 PM as usual. I have one other announcement. I will have sent out to all of you a survey about your participation on committees. What I want to try and do is, when we get however many people join us next year, I want to have a one or two-page document for people who are coming into committees so they'll be able to hit the ground running a little bit better. So if you get a chance to fill that out, that would be fantastic. I would really appreciate that. Supervisor Steen.
Yes, don't forget to mention the executive meeting date.
November 8th. The executive committee will meet at November, on November 8th at 3:30 PM in room 54 of this room.
What he said. Anybody else? All right. We are adjourned.